Okay, welcome everyone. Thank you for your patience. We are all now here, so welcome. This is Wednesday, March 14th. This is a special meeting for advisory board interviews. And following our special meeting here, we'll convene to a closed session meeting at City Hall. So we won't actually adjourn the meeting. We'll reconvene at the other part of our meeting today. So it's Wednesday, March 14th. We are located at the Veterans Memorial Hall, and then we'll convene to the City Hall. For the record, we do have a quorum. All members are present, and we'll call the meeting to order. And with that, we have two items on the agenda. Our Wreck and Park Commission interviews, our water reclamation facility Citizens Advisory Committee interviews, and open up for public comment at this time. For anybody who'd like to come up and for public comment. Thank you.
Good afternoon, dear Mayor, honorable council members and staff. I, Carol Truesdale, a resident of Morro Bay since 1995 and homeowner support the potential decision to select Barry Brandon as part of the Warp Cat Committee. He has a complete understanding of the current water reclamation facility issues and what the city will face in the future. He is articulate, thorough, and very knowledgeable with a dynamic background of successes in his private sector career. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Anybody else for a public comment?
Good evening, council members. My name is James Warner. I am a forty-year resident of Morro Bay homeowner. I am also here to urge you to appoint Mr. Brandon to the acronym named Water Project. And I have met with Mr. Brandon, spoke with him. I find him to be intelligent, articulate, very knowledgeable on the subject at hand, and I think he would be an asset to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a little bit different. During council members, we have speaker slots, so I just want to make sure that for everybody, you know, it's public comment. Just come on up if you will, please. Thanks. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Four. I would also like to see Mr. Brandon nominated for the position and seated. I would like to actually respond to a question that, or a response that happened last night during a meeting.
You know, I know there's some formalities, but this is for items on the agenda. So if you could please speak to the items on the agenda, which is the advisory board, if you could do that, please. Thank you.
Okay. No, this is not specifically about that. It is about the procedure for the coming vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Baggett, and we have owned a home here in Morro Bay since the mid-eighties. We've seen a lot of things happen, and I am here to recommend Barry to be placed on the water reclamation board. He has the voice and experience that are needed to navigate our troubled water problems. Lots, lots of experience. So I would say that it would go a long way if you guys would at least appoint him to this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Thanks, everybody. And with that, so as we get into interviews, our first interview is for recreation and park. We have two applicants, and for water reclamation, we have two applicants as well. We have the table up here. We'll invite you all up. Pardon me. Would you like to let, Dana, would you let us know, I know we're, we have one missing applicant for Wreck and Park, and maybe you can speak to that and advise us on that?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Swain had surgery this morning and is at home recovering, so he will not be able to attend the interviews tonight. He wanted to be here, but wisely chose to stay home and recover. I also want to mention that Mr. Singh, who applied for the water reclamation facility Citizens Advisory Committee, has withdrawn his application. He had intended to live in Morro Bay, but chose to purchase a home elsewhere, so was not able to participate.
Okay. All right, great. So with that, we'll invite our first applicant up, and then procedurally, Dr. Swain's served on our Wreck and Park Board for quite some time. So procedurally, there's allowances for absences, and the council can discuss, you know, how we want to proceed with that. Does council want to talk about that now, before we get into the interviews? Red, you want to lead off on that?
Sure. I have observed Dr. Swain in my capacity as liaison to the Recreation and Parks Commission, and I am satisfied to consider him tonight based upon my observation of him and his experience. And I would like to proceed with consideration of his nomination tonight.
With his absence?
Yes.
Okay. All right, great. Thanks. Matt?
I concur.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody else? John?
I concur.
I did too.
Okay, good. An unanimous concurrence on that. So with that, we would invite our first applicant up. And so we have Mike Espino. You can correct me if I get that wrong. Come on up. Yeah. Come on up, pick any seat, and there's a little button there, and when you push that button, you'll see a green light. And make yourself comfortable. Just real briefly, we would just, are you turned on there, Mike?
I am.
Okay, good. Well, welcome. So at this point, we just want to say welcome. Thanks for turning your application. We'd just like you to introduce yourself, and then we'll go through some brief questions real quickly, and we'll go from there. If you could introduce yourself, thanks.
Great. Well, Honorable Mayor, City Council members and staff, I really appreciate the opportunity tonight to be here, as well as having the honor of being considered as one of the open positions on the Recreation Commission. A little bit about myself, in my current position, I'm the Aquatic Safety and Risk Specialist for the YMCA of the USA. And in my position, I provide resources, tools, and support to all the local Y's throughout the country in helping make our aquatic facilities safer. Previous to my current position, I was with the American Red Cross at their national headquarters, where I was the manager of aquatics technical development, and oversaw all their aquatics programs, including lifeguarding, water safety instructor, and other programs that we partnered with, with organizations like the U.S. Olympic Committee, USA Sailing, USA Swimming, as well as overseeing the Professional Rescuers CPR program and other special projects. I've had the opportunity to work at several different parks and recreation departments, as well as park authorities, whether as a lifeguard, head lifeguard, or aquatics director. My educational training is in Public Recreation Administration, where I achieved a degree in, a BS degree at the University of Tennessee in education, with recreation being a major. One of the things to help round out my educational training is I did take physical education courses, as well as did my internship with the City of Santa Maria in their Parks and Recreation Department in their sports division. So lastly, I've been a resident for ten years in Morro Bay, and again, I appreciate the honor of being here tonight, and I hope I can be of service to the community.
All right, Mike. Thanks for that introduction. We'll just start off with Marlois McPherson, Councilmember McPherson, and she can start off with a question, and then we'll go on down the line. Thanks.
Well, thank you. Thank you for being here, Mike, and thank you for applying. We're delighted to have you. I know, and you've just explained to us, your background has been mostly in aquatics. But tell me how you would get up to speed on the rest of the programs that are offered here in our Recreation and Parks Department.
Well, getting up to speed, what you have right now, I've definitely been reviewing the website and seeing what courses are being offered, as well as the different sports leagues you have here. I think it'd be a good opportunity to sit and visit with the staff at the Recreation Department, to kind of get a good feel of the programming available here, and what types of programming, as well as the community we serve.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Mike, thank you also for me, for applying, a great background, and apparently would have, be a great addition to the community for us in terms of this position. But I do have one question for you that I'd like to ask, and it's this. Economically, the city is financially challenged, and we have a partner, or a number of partner organizations. One is the foundation that helps our youth offset their fees for participating in sports, which has been a tremendous success. Do you have, in your experience or background, any other recommendations or thoughts about how we could make access for what are becoming fairly costly programs, more accessible to young people and/or older people, but also how we could improve the economic, I'd say, income or revenues for the city without just raising fees?
Correct. So it is definitely an issue that we've seen since the economic crisis back in 2008, and we're slowly starting to get out of that. But the issue in trying to find funding, obviously trying to find funding through a foundation or any other partner, may or may not be available. One of the things, and I also speak with experience with the why, is that in many cases, many of our whys are like that out there in the community, where they want to be able to offer more programming, but they don't have the funds or the resources to do it. So we've been actively partnering with parks and recreation departments, municipalities, as well as other organizations, in which we can offer the programming, or arrangements where maybe the city would provide us the building, and then we would manage and operate that and program it, or pool our resources together with another organization in order to provide the services to the community, no matter what economic level. And even though it may not be monetarily, but at least having the resources and staffing time, you kind of combine the best of both worlds there.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Welcome, Mike. With your aquatic background, you really must like having the pool open here in town.
Yes. I know it's been a long time coming.
Yes, it has. So in terms of your background also, and you've had a chance in your ten years probably to kind of view things from afar, as busy as you probably are, what do you view as some of the challenge in terms of parks and rec- recreationally, that you've viewed here in Morro Bay, and then as viewing those challenges, you coming on to the Wreck Board, what do you think some of those things that you might want or would like to see brought up?
Well, and you do mention, what I've been observing is the best I can while my time here. Obviously, I'm, I am on the road a lot. I think the biggest thing that I have seen probably as more of a challenge is trying to get more information about what we have to offer. I know we have information on the website, but the website is kind of a little hard to navigate in trying to find all the resources and tools you have there. So knowing what the programming activities we are, so I think probably having better marketing available of what is done with the city and what is offered out there. In the terms of parks and facilities and everything like that, I think it's, everything is, looks pretty good. I don't see any challenges. I know one challenge that has, is being addressed, from what I've seen, is the issues of the restrooms at each, each of the facilities. But, you know, it's kind of funny, because any time I go anywhere, it's hard for me to go to a pool and relax for vacation, and it's the same to go to a park, because I'm always looking at the safety aspect of it. And I must say, with all of the parks I've been to, and I've been to every park here, is you have no issues with safety that I've seen.
Mike, thank you for stepping up and volunteering for this position. What are your goals for recreation services?
Well, one of my goals is, just what I mentioned, is more of the ease of access of what is being offered within the community. I think marketing of the programs that are offered within the city is, is a big thing for us. Like I said, I had a hard time trying to navigate the website, even trying to find the addresses of the parks out there. I know you have on there recreational activities, but if I'm coming from out of town, and I cannot locate the parks without having an address, it's kind of hard for me to enjoy that. I did find under layers, a brochure that did have a map, which was good, but you really had to look for it. So I think that's the biggest thing that I would like to see happen, is the accessibility of information. So not only can the folks in town, but out-of-town folks can enjoy what we have to offer.
That would be a great accomplishment. Thank you. All right. Thanks, Red. Mike, thanks again. And it was interesting to listen to what goals that you might want to offer as well. And council has taken an approach of setting out work programs for advisory boards, and we'll go through that annually. And part of that is input from our advisory board. So you just made a suggestion on what might be advantageous for us to pursue, but going into it, we have a set work plans for, for our advisory boards to work through. So is, is that something you're going to struggle with, knowing that, you know, there's, there's kind of set plans and goals already coming into an advisory board position, just getting started where you're at? Is that, do you think that'll be a problem for you?
No, it'll not be a problem at all. I'm just telling you what I have identified. But obviously, I would be here to serve the council and the city and the goals that are, been laid out. So I would provide my expertise and experience to help you achieve those goals.
Okay, thanks. And I think, right now, our Wreck and Park Commission Advisory Board has kind of segued into recreation. We do have our policies and procedures coming back to council, so there probably will be some more discussion on the wreck and park aspect, because right now, we've kind of overlapped some of our park discussions with our Public Works Advisory Board. But I think there's an opportunity for us to have that discussion amongst council as well. Those are all my questions. And with that, are there any follow-up questions? Yeah. Go ahead, John, and then Marlois.
Yeah, Mike, with, with your background, normally, we just ask one question, but I have a second question.
You know, questions are open, yeah.
And it's, it's one that, it's an issue I've been thinking about for the community, and wondered if you either had an opinion or any experience, and that's with a multi-disciplinary sports complex in a community like Morro Bay, that has such fantastic weather.
Yeah.
There are a number of companies out there, if you will, that provide services, anything from operating, building, constructing, sports complexes that offer venues for, you know, anywhere from three to 25 or 30 different sports. And economically, given the fact that we have such a beautiful city and a wonderful city, and also great weather, it seems to me that there could be a vision created to develop such a complex. Do you have any experience in your background, and what are your thoughts about that for Morro Bay? Just curious.
I have not had really any experience with athletic complexes, and especially in some of the cities I had worked in, nearby cities, and obviously, City of Santa Maria does have a smaller complex, but no in that regards. However, with building an athletic complex, which I think would be great, and could have a lot of potential, I think the first thing that you need to do is to have a needs assessment done, to make sure that it is something that the city can support and sustain, and that we are able to bring in outside competitors or leagues to be part of that, to help sustain the athletic complex. You know, just like what was done with the pools, to have a needs assessment, having the same thing done here, too.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Marlois?
Well, I was just going to say, instead of, usually, we vote in private, but would it be appropriate to just make a motion?
Absolutely. If that's, I think we can do that tonight, if everybody's okay with that. Okay, good.
I move we appoint Dr. Robert Swain and Mike Espino to the Recreation and Parks Commission.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second motion by Marlois, a second by John. And sorry, my hearing's better on this side. He's closer to me. It gets in this ear quickly. And with that, are there any further discussions on that, or any comments? All right, let's do a roll call vote. Excuse me, roll call vote with that. Marlois?
Okay. I.
Marlois will call it out?
I'm Dana. Oh, you were.
Excuse me, Dana. Yeah, I said Marlois, Dana.
We've, we've never had this before, so this is a new experience.
So roll call vote, Dana.
Practice. So Councilmember McPherson?
Aye.
Councilmember Heding?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackewetzky?
Aye.
And Mayor Irons?
Yes.
And the Countess Five-O, you were appointed to the Recreation and Parks Commission.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
I look forward to working.
All right. All right, great. Thanks. Cool. Next up, we have our two applicants for our, so it's Mr. Kaler that's not going to be here, but Mr. Rogers and Mr. Brandon that are here. Is that correct? Mr. Rogers, if you'd come up, come on up, please. Thanks, welcome.
That's how they get you to come in.
So I just asked for an introduction. I just want to make sure that you understand there's a little button, and a green, the microphone on, and I'll start with Mr. Rogers, if you wouldn't mind. And if you could just do an introduction, that would be great. And then Barry, thanks. Thanks, welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Doug Rogers, and I own a place on Los Tunas, up near the park. And I'll be moving in there, hopefully before Halloween, construction permitting. I have a manufacturing business in Visalia, which is still in business. And I wrote a little letter to Dana, and just briefly describing the fact that I have, I operate boiler machinery, and of course, I'm dependent on clean freshwater to operate a boiler. So I'm very well aware of water supply issues. I'm also responsible for paying for things like maintenance and plant improvements. So I'm, I kind of have a real-world perspective on operating of any kind of facility. I have been a volunteer on wetlands and coastal issues. I lived in Los Angeles County for ten years, thirty years ago, and I was very active on wetlands issues up and down the Pacific coast. And just so happens, I toured a number of treatment plants, from Alki Point in Seattle to Orange County in Fountain Valley, and I even visited the Morro Bay Plant in 1986, when they were applying for their 301h waiver. So I'm familiar with those issues also. And I'm very concerned about water supply issues here in California, and the news, of course, about Cape Town, which the weather's changed, and all of a sudden, Table Mountain is not producing the water supply that they've depended on for so long. And they're in very, very serious water conservation mood right now. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to apply to be a member of this council. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it. Barry, welcome.
Good evening, council. Barry Brandon, citizen of Morro Bay for 25 years, property owner in the county for 30 years. My background, I'm a mechanical engineer, and a, also a degree in business administration. When I was going to college, I worked for a consulting engineer, and used to do surveys and installation of inspections of, for small towns, water lines and sewer lines. Actually, worked on my first sewage treatment plant for a little town just outside of Portland. Got to watch them build it. And in the wintertime, we'd do the drawings. So I became familiar with the, the process quite a long time ago. As a construction person, I built, I had an awful job of building service stations. And so I know what the challenges of getting a permit is, so I know some of the hoops you go through, and some of the complexities of the cost, trying to control them, and be sure that you get the results you needed, and how important consultants can be. I've been very interested, when they built the Los Osos facility, I happened to own a large piece of property next to where, where the property, where they ended up building the plant. So I watched that entire process, as far as how it was put together, and went to the meetings, as far as the reuse of the water, the recycle, the design of the plant, and through the, through the entire process. through the entire process. At one point, they were gonna use some of my property for that facility, so I became intimately aware of it. As far as water goes, I have solar wells now on my ranch for the cattle, and I know how important that is. And I also have been watching very closely, I was one of the applicants, excuse me, one of the appellants, from the city of Morro Bay, filed for, the permit was given by the city, and then it was appealed to the Coastal Commission. So I followed the process all the way from the very beginning, the design, and all the various aspects. I read all of the facility master plan for both the current project and the previous project, so I understand, I think, where we're going. And I feel that cost is a primary thing, how you approach cost, very difficult in the public environment to control costs because of Davis Bacon Act and, and all the public works, things that you have to do. But I also know the other side of how private industry can bring their expertise to a lot of government problems, and I'd like to be able to watch how we do this and see if I can help the city find a way to do a better job. Water is important, I know where we get our water, and I know how important it is. First time I found out that we were putting a million gallons a day of water in the ocean, I learned that about 25 years ago, I just about fainted, and so I've been very interested to see if we could find a way to not put a million gallons of water into the ocean. I don't care how clean it is, it's just a shame to waste it, because it's such an important commodity. Farmers up the valley are dying for it, yet we're throwing it away, so I'm hoping we could find some way to solve mutual problems, it's kind of a holistic point of view. So I'd like the Marloes group, I think, that I can contribute to it, and I thank you for the opportunity to reply.
Okay, great, Barry, thanks. So I'll just start in the same direction, and have Marloes start off with a question, and then come on down through.
I have a, I guess it's a point of procedure I need to add.
Sure.
Can I ask different questions?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And I say that because we have somebody who's been a long-term resident, and whom I know quite well, and somebody who's kind of brand-new here, and may not have the same level of expertise of the history of this project. So let me just start with Mr. Rogers, and he, he and I actually had the opportunity to meet briefly and talk about his interests, and I know you're new to the community, so could you tell us how you think you could contribute to this advisory committee moving forward? And I know that you run your own business, and if you could tell us a little bit about your philosophy of buying equipment, and, you know, what's important when you're making those kinds of financial decisions?
Well, I'm, let's just say, I'm a little business guy, and so I've made lots of mistakes, and paid for all of them, and so I've developed the philosophy in business that it's, it's best to invest for the long term, and pay a higher price to get good raw materials and good equipment that will ultimately reduce problems. In manufacturing, you have, you know, you have a percentage of your, your production, which is gonna be scrap, which you can't ship to your customers, and basically is a non-revenue, basically a waste, just like the water we were talking about. So the idea of keeping that to an absolute minimum has really driven me toward being willing to spend, do things right the first time, I guess, spend correctly, to get the good equipment and the good raw materials. So that's kind of my business philosophy. I treat my people well, many of my employees are 25-year veterans, even though I only, I have 12 people working for me. Sometimes that goes up to 14, when they get a little busier, but regardless, my people are very loyal to me, and that's a good feeling. As far as what I can do to contribute, you know, I have a lot to learn, I've just been looking at the draft plans for the facility, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, lot of material there that, that is gonna take some study. But I think I have at least enough common sense, enough wisdom, so to speak, about how operations should be, and what kind of investments should be made, and I certainly know the urgency of, you know, our water supplies. I mean, we have a rainy week this week, and I know how that kind of makes everybody feel a lot better, and last year was wonderful, but what's gonna happen over the course of, you know, this project? We don't know what our water supply will be next year or the year after. So I, I love the idea of, of using this water better than we are right now, and I intend to, to help from that standpoint.
Thank you. Should I continue?
Keep going, yeah.
Okay, all right, Barry, you know, you and I have shared a long history. We've known each other for 14 years, we've shared a lot of reports, we've talked about this issue and this project many, many, many times, and you have taken me to visit potential sites, and I have willingly listened and followed you through this entire journey. So you are aware that now the council has made the decision, and this we made after getting a terrible rate study that showed that it would be too expensive for our citizens, and so we put a pause on the project, and we have been trying to reduce costs. Cost is one of our main considerations now, and we want to make the monthly rate for the ratepayers as low as we possibly can. But we are committed to building a water reclamation facility at the South Bay Plant, and we are on a fast track, because we are eligible to apply for a low-interest WIFI loan, and the application is due in July. We were selected one of 40 people, and 12 were selected to receive this loan, so we are on the fast track to get that loan, and we need to move quickly, and we need the help of our advisory committee to get that loan. So my first, and it's a two-part question, do you understand the importance, and would you describe for me how you see the importance of getting this loan that we can apply for in, in July?
Well, the issue that, hello, the issue that was mentioned earlier, and you mentioned it, was the pocketbook of the citizen. Right now, the, the entire city is in financial tough straits. Every dollar that comes in to the city has to come from the residents or the visitors. There's a limited amount of money that can come in. So every extra dollar we spend on a wastewater treatment plant is one less dollar that would come in, for example, if the city put in a one cent, 1% increase in their sales tax, then that would do a lot for the residents of this, of the city, and run, to run the city. And so that revenue has to come from somewhere. So if we can find a way to keep the cost of the project down, so that we'll have the money to be able to operate the city, that's, to me, is the most important thing. And I, it's, let me continue. And so I know that it's important to get the loan, but I also know that the price, the cost, it has to be kept down. And I still believe that with thorough examination, that the cost be, be kept down, can be kept down. But to answer your question, I think the WIFI loan's important, but I think in the overall financial scheme of the city, that that probably needs to be re-looked at. And sometimes, it's better not to borrow a lot of money, because I feel that there, there are alternative solutions, and I think that those solutions have not been properly examined.
All right, well, my follow-up question to that was, if we were to appoint you, are you committed to helping this council over the next four months to meet the deadline of the WIFI loan?
I will be glad to examine everything that we have, but I will feel that the, the process needs to be examined properly, and I don't know that we're getting everything we need to do. If we have a good project, if we have a good project that the council feels is adequate, that will meet the job, be more than happy to support it, but if the project fails because it's exorbitant, then, to me, a WIFI loan is, is, as I've said before, it's kind of like a student loan. If you, if you borrow too much, and you get out of school, and you can't afford to pay for it, it's kind of bad. So I think that I would be the, the person that would question, and I would think that the council would want someone to question, because if you had nothing but yeses, then that may not be the right solution.
Anything else, Marloes?
Well, I'll let someone else ask.
We can always revisit.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah. Thank you. John? Yeah?
Well, welcome, both of you, and thanks for stepping up to the plate to consider being part of this complex process that we're involved in, maybe one of the most important decisions for the future of the community. And my question might be a bit complex, so I'll, I'll try to go slowly, and make sure, and this is for both of you to, to consider. I have to make the assumption, in applying for this position, that both of you have done a fair amount of research, homework, and gained a significant understanding of where we have come from, where we have been, and the complexities associated with a project such as this. And so I'm gonna assume that that's true, and if, if that's not true, maybe you can enlighten me and let me know. Given that fact and understanding that, can you articulate for me, each of you, in your own words, the difference in, in your, your perception of the difference in end-line cost to community users or ratepayers, when you look at total project costs for capital spending versus debt service or the cost of money, and how the two contribute to the rate?
Who do you want to go first?
Doesn't matter to me, who wants to go first?
Well, you know, I'll, I'll say for sure that I, I'm not familiar with the entire history of this project, other than I visited the plant in 86, and I'm, I've looked at the city website, but I'm, I'll just be honest, that, you know, I'm not, I'm not aware of all, all the details, but I can say that in the, the city of Visalia, where I've operated a business for 30 years, has, their water is provided by Cal Water out of San Jose, and Cal Water services a number of cities in California, not all. So with all the water conservation issues that we face as a state, as, as people conserve, Cal Water raised their rates, because they said, oh, we have to have a certain minimum amount of revenue, so we can operate our maintenance and build our employee HR building in San Jose. So, yes, it's a very complex relationship between usage and debt service and rates. And I can only share that experience in Visalia, that people were outraged at, at Cal Water for, what do you mean, you're raising their rates? We're, we're conserving. So I've, I've lived through that, and, and in fact, the city actually was very strongly considering revoking the contract with Cal Water and providing its own water facility, which they decided not to do, finally. So I, I understand it's very complex, but I also know, when I was at Cal Poly in the 70s, Los Osos was faced with installing a sewer plant in the 70s. Well, there were people who said, oh, no, no, we don't want the assessment, et cetera. And I, even though I was going to Cal Poly, and I was in the business school, somehow that stuck with me, that the people in Los Osos, you know, basically stopped the project, and so what was a, I don't know, what would have been a 10 or 15 million dollar plant, ended up being, you know, I mean, Barry knows how much money they spent on that place, but by delaying, the cost went up significantly. So I, that's a bitter lesson that I have never forgotten.
Mr., Mr. Heding, I think the, your question is, is very clear. Obviously, when you get a rate collected from a, a citizen, part of it goes for operation of the plant. The more efficient the plant operates, the less part of that has to go to operation. But the other side is the debt service, and it's, it's when you finance something, and I remember when I first bought my first house, it was a 20-year financing, it was great. Then as the price of houses go up, all of a sudden, 30-year financing, so we can get the payment down where you can handle it. And, and obviously, when I bought my first house, it was 6% interest, and now, you say 6%, people go through the roof, because the interests are like 3.5, 4%. So I know how sensitive, I've probably purchased, sold 40 properties in the last 40 years, and I know how to use other people's money, and I know how important money is. So I know that if we do a dumb thing, and we miss a real low-cost loan, we could be shooting ourselves in the foot. But I also know that when we have a cash flow, as we do now, from the previous 218 money, that will provide the, a debt service for a certain-sized project. And then you could look at it another way, what if we didn't have to borrow the money? What if we said, okay, we have a $6 million a year of revenue to operate the plant and repair the plant? And so instead of borrowing the money, we don't have to, we don't have to borrow the money. Let's take a look at the project at the end of two years, so we don't have to have a WIFI loan. We don't need a state revolving loan. We take the cash flow that we have, and you work within your budget and within your means. That's kind of the way I operate now, I couldn't do that when I first got started, because I didn't have any money. But when you have a capital plant that we basically pretty well paid for, we own it, we got a water system that we've beaten almost all of it down, so why do we want to borrow more money, when, if we can operate with what we have? And I don't think that, I don't think that question has been fully answered, because I don't, I don't see that in, in any studies. What if we took the cash that we have for the next five or six years on the 218, and we said, okay, how much money we are really gonna have to use on capital improvements and repair, where we are, you don't have to get a permit to fix something? How does that work? That, that examination, I think, needs to be done, as to compare it with your question on the WIFI loan. So I haven't answered your question, but that's the way I look at it. It's called CIF, that's Cash and Fist.
All right, so here we go, this is, this question, and Doug, going back to your first visit to our water plant, and then Barry, your long history in the city and with this project. One of the big things facing the city, and it's kind of a duh issue, is water. And in that, is our state water project. State water project is coming, our contract is gonna be coming up in the mid, 2020, 2025, I think it is. And so with that, knowing that how those costs for that water will be going up, cost to our ratepayers, cost to our city, how important, and how do you view reclamation in this, in this WRF project? Cost is big, but knowing that, what we're looking at, the future of our water in Morro Bay, so reclamation is so important, and how do you think it fits into the project? Doug, if you don't mind, you can start.
Well, I think it's essential. I mean, just, just in studying what's happening in Cape Town, I mean, the, the affected, the affected business groups, is tourism. People are not booking the hotels on the, on the coast, because they're issued, they're worried about sources of water. I mean, there's bad publicity, it's a very severe situation there. They're now in the process of building desalination plants, which we all know are extremely expensive to operate, and they're in the process of building a water reclamation plant, but that's several years away, it's not gonna help them in the near term. You know, we're not in a crisis at this time, but, you know, in the, if something, like this renewal of this contract is coming in the next five or six or seven years, it, it just seems prudent that we should be looking at every source of water we can possibly get, and our wastewater is certainly a source of water.
Obviously, recycled water is, I like to say that there are no pipes running back and forth to the space station. All the water they've got up there, they took with them, and they still got it, and they keep reusing it, and reusing it. And I'd like to see someday, Morro Bay be a space station, where the water we have stays here and it works. The difficulty that we have is, is our topography. Los Osos, when they built their facility, they had a lot of geography, and they took the water out of the plant, and they had three or four And they took the water out of the plant, and they had three or four water purveyors over there. And they have an upper and a lower aquifer. So they were able to take the water that was secondary to clean, they take it out through a system, and they use groundwater spreading or spraying. They sell some of it to the farmers, and the farmers use it on their fields. That was one of the exchanges they did. But there's a Broderson field, there's a Willows Creek field, where they actually recharge their aquifer. But their soils out there are sandy, for the most part. And so the soil would absorb the water. And they're putting about 400,000 gallons a day, 400,000 to 500,000 gallons a day into the ground. There's no place in Moro Bay that we could put 400,000, 500,000 gallons in the ground, so that we could draw it back up. Our, we have a very hard, a very difficult place, the studies that we show. It's very difficult. It'd be nice if we owned back up the valley with the avocados. And what I see is a dream situation, and I don't think it'll happen. But if all the farmers in the valley would say, hey, we'd love to have the water, we'll arrange to buy it from you, we'll come up with a bond issue to pay for the pipes to go out there, so that your water can go in that aquifer. And then in exchange for it, as some of it comes down through the Moro Valley, then our wells can pick it up. But that's a big, huge project. And right now, the recharge into the basin is so difficult, because of the hydrology, because of the amount of land that we own. If you put it in over here, you can't draw it back out. So you have a whole bunch of water rights issues. So recycle is important, but Moro Bay, because of its small size, is really handicapped in that regard. Los Osos had, I don't know how many hundred thousand acres out there that they could deal with, and that was part of the project. So that limitation means that we have to be smarter. Right now, if we built, repaired our plant that we have, and added a tertiary filter facility, so it would take out the, and make it so that it's Title 22 water quality, we could put it back in the ground. That's a very little, a very small expense to modify our existing plants to do that. The problem with, if you put it back in the ground, as I said today, you'll float, you'll float the skating rink, you'll float the hotels in that small basin, because it just won't accept it. So that problem, I know they tried to get a study to do it. I don't think we have an answer for it yet. I wished we did. But obviously, reuse is the way to go. We just have to find a way to solve the problem. But it's not simple.
The council adopted goals based upon community input. And I'm going to assume that both of you support those goals. And raise your hand if you don't. So what, we're going to be looking at two contractors' bid proposals to meet those community goals. What are you going to look for? What is your experience in reviewing contractor bid proposals? And what are you going to be looking for as you go through those? And I'd like to hear from Doug first, please.
Well, I'm, as I said, I'm a small business guy, so I do get proposals from suppliers. And I have experience in making decisions on which bid am I going to accept for primarily material supplies, also for manufacture of what would be aluminum tooling, which I use in my plastic manufacturing process to heat and cool plastic parts. So I don't want to claim a lot of legal knowledge, other than I'm a contractor, in effect. And I believe I have enough common sense to look clear-eyed at what is, what is being proposed. I was certainly alarmed to see the lawsuit, you know, regard, from the contractor in Los Osos, who claimed that he wasn't paid for change orders. And the county came back and said, oh, well, he didn't do the proper procedure and all that. So, you know, I just think that kind of stuff is just preposterous. And I want to make sure that those sorts of details are addressed in whatever contract ultimately is let. So without knowing what the bids are going to look like, I would just say I'm going to study them. And since this is an advisory council, I would imagine there's going to be a certain amount of intelligent discussion over what the options are. So that's, I can't claim to be more than that.
I had the good fortune of working in a big company. And so when you start out, they say, okay, here's how the bids are done. So you draw up a specification, and the bids would go out. And our procedure usually, for any project, was five bidders. And I'd say, well, that's pretty neat. Take the low bidder, and away you go. And the good old boy says, you know, that's a nice idea, but here's how it really works. Usually, you find the low bidder made a mistake. He left something out. And if you hook up with the low bidder, you're going to have a headache, it's going to cost you more in the long run. The high bidder didn't want your project. He just threw a number out there, because if he got lucky, he'd get it. So usually, your best bidder is probably one of those three in the middle. And then you have to look at the qualifications of the bidders, to see if they can deliver what they say they can do. A lot of guys can put a number out. I, I started out as an engineering estimator. I didn't know what I was doing. I was going by a guidebook. And it takes a lot more than that. It takes experience and qualification. So bidding is an art. When you do the bidding, it's hard. And when you read the bid, it's hard. So I think that we're unfortunate, at the present time, we have two bidders. Started out with five. My opinion, the specifications were written so that you didn't allow a lot of good, qualified bidders to bid, because of the constraints that were put in the RFP. So if the RFP were written, in my opinion, correctly, you would have had a lot of bidders. And right now, we wouldn't be just having two bidders. When you have four bidders that are qualified, and you only have two left, then all of a sudden, you have to question the process. And I think the process that we're presently in is flawed. So if I were asked, how do you, how would you get the price down? I know what I would do. I would get someone to say, okay, how do we write this RFP in such a manner that we invite more bidders? And I would put it out to bid again.
And Barry, this question is just for you. You mentioned that it is valuable to have someone on the advisory council who questions the process. And I agree with that. We learn from people who disagree with us. Do you understand that there's a difference between questioning the process and obstructing the process?
I do. And I think that my actions are visible, because education is the key to getting anything done. I would love to be the person that said, Moro Bay has the best process, the best facility. And, but if, up until for a long time, there were no allowances for questioning. There really was no allowances for questioning. And so the way the government works is the citizens have to make noise. And they have to make a noise. And you may feel this obstructionism, but the only reason you're seeing obstructions is because many citizens don't feel that the answers are being, are being heard.
Okay, great. Thanks. It might be a repetitive question, but my first question's for Doug. Thanks, both of you guys, for applying. Doug, so we've gone through years of evaluation and processes to evaluate what our options are. 17 different sites. We actually took a pause after going to South Bay, and we said, hey, we're going to go back to look at those other sites back at the beach. And unanimously, we've made the choice of going back to the South Bay site. From here forward, we, as Marlus was saying, we're on a fast track. We'll have an EIR to come forward. So I guess the question is, from a, from a council's perspective, we're moving forward with this project. Do you have a problem supporting the project? Do you have a problem supporting the project moving forward?
No, I'm absolutely, you know, I'm a firm believer in water recycling, as I said Moro Bay has been working on a 301H waiver all these years.
Yeah.
That's coming to an end. And in fact, part of the, all the financial discussion has to include, what happens if we, we don't have a new plant? What are the fines going to cost? See, I don't think that's really part of the, I mean, I'm sure it is part of somebody's thinking, but that's going to be an issue. And it's going to be a bigger issue if we don't get this plant built. So I, I mean, that's just part of the financial analysis, I think. So I'm a firm believer that we need to do something, and that the plant on the beach is basically toast.
Okay, all right. Barry, you said, you said earlier about questioning. I'm going to ask your question now. You asked, you said earlier that you, whether or not it was questioning the process, and/or there's other options. And we've explored all those options. So we're moving forward, as I just explained. Is that, is that going to be a problem for you as well?
It's not a problem to move forward. If you build a plant at South Bay, if we build a plant, when we build a plant, then we should get the best price. And presently, I don't feel we're getting the best price. And the reason I feel that is when Los Osos can build the same-sized plant for $50 million, and we could use the exact same plant, and our price comes out where I see it, then I have a problem with the process. It really doesn't matter where you put the plant, if the economics are right. If you put it at South Bay, there's some wonderful opportunities to recharge that basin out there. But the difficulty you have is that $100 million, this city can't, I don't believe, can support a plant out there. So you have to have an option. The plant would be a lovely plant back there. Great. But not for 150, 100 million. It doesn't make any sense. So I don't see the process being killed. That's the questions that need to be asked. The city needs to go ahead, yes. But we need to do it with the right kind of money. And I haven't seen the answer to that. I know we're waiting for bids to come back. But when you structure the bid request, you're going to get a high bid, because there aren't any competitive bidders left. That's, that's my concern with the project.
Any follow-up questions, Marlus? No? Any other follow-up questions? Okay. I guess then we can follow the same procedure and just make a motion. I'd be willing to make a motion to appoint Doug Rogers to the board. And I need a second.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second? Any discussion on that? None? So we need a roll call vote. Dana?
Mayor Irons?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heding?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackiewetzky?
Yes.
The vote passes 5-0.
Okay. All right. That's it. I don't, I'm not inclined to make a motion for the other candidate, unless somebody else on the board is. Sure?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Barry Braden to the WRF cap.
Motion fails. There's no second? And with that, I think, unless there's any closing remarks from anybody at this point?
Well, yeah. I'll just thank the applicants for, both for being interested and engaged in the process.
Yeah. I think I just want to say that this has been a very long process, and we have looked at every alternative. And this council is committed to getting the cost, the monthly cost, down for our citizens. And we have made decisions, and we're moving forward. And we need people that are going to help us do that. And so that's my reason for not voting for Barry.
And with that, I'll conclude this. And Dana, so we'd have to go out to application for one more person?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, and in closing, just to thank the applicants for coming. And we aren't adjourning this meeting. We're recessing.
Recede.
And we're going to be relocating to City Hall for the next portion of the meeting.
And we'll read the title of the closed session item here?
And the reconvening to the closed session item is Government Code Section 54956.8 with Real Property Negotiator. And the lease site is the Otter Rock on the Embarcadero with the city of Moro Bay. All right. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.